College meeting to order, seven o'clock. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our
While you're standing, I'd like a moment of silence for the people of Ukraine and three people that have passed away that had been connected to the school. Ed Schneider, Ed McVinnie, who was a representative to the school committee for Hanover, and Phil Jubet, who was a bus driver and drove bus number nine for many years. Tonight, there'll be a vote to enter executive session to consider the purchase exchange, lease, or value of real estate at 436 Webster Street, Hanover. As an open meeting, may have detrimental effect on the school committee's bargaining position. As an agenda adjustment, after executive session, we may not take up number 11 on our agenda. It all depends what happens at executive sessions. Public comment, any comments from the public tonight? Seeing none? Oh, and excuse me. Of course, the meeting is being videotaped along here. Prove the minutes. Motion made by Situit, second by Cohasset. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor? It is unanimous for those in attendance. Student Advisory, she's unable to make it tonight. Reports. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your package is the treasurer's report, which highlights culinary on the cover this month. It also has a blurb of Representative DeCoste from, I think it's Hanover, Norwell, and Rockland, who is quite active on Facebook, talking about all the successes of the senior program. He made a nice post about the culinary grant that came to him for $100,000. And he's constantly posting good things about the school, so that's just a little blurb that he posted for us. Page two is our cash balances as of February 28th. Overall, $5.664 million, $845,000 to head. A little dip this time of year only because March 1st is when we do the assessment billing for our member town, so we pretty much will send out, we sent out off $2 million of the bills on March 1st, so we'll get that money inside the trickle down now, so we'll be in good shape when we replenish the event accounts. Page two is our revenues. Again, no revenue from our towns this month. We have, we did get, we have applied for the Commonwealth Mass has a COVID relief fund for wages that are paid to employees for COVID relief situations and so forth. Pam, Curtis, and Holly have been working together to identify COVID hours that were paid throughout the district in the last few months, and we did get a reimbursement of $15,000, $15,894 this past month for the, again, the reimbursement for the Commonwealth. So, and page three is our expenses. Again, 1.1 million of expenses for the month. Again, payroll is the biggest number as always, and health insurance is the second biggest number. Everything else is going smoothly. We're getting a little bit more of a bump in some of the supply requests from some of the teachers as they run through a lot of their opening school year supplies and they're replenishing the shelves. Overall, things are going well. Janine's doing a fabulous job in purchasing, keeping setting control and working on a lot of projects. And again, PM's been acclimated well to the payroll system, so overall, things are going well.
Motion to accept the treasurer's report. Second by Lou, Harrington, second. Any discussion on the treasurer's report? All those in favor? Unanimous for those who are here. Motion carries. Do you want someone else to read them? Oh, you passed it on already.
Mr. Queen to read that for the warrants.
Okay. Warrant 16A, $146,211.
Just the bottom.
Just the bottom? Okay. Sure you don't want to get into the weeds?
We don't want to get into the weeds, no.
Okay. So total warrants is $1,625,079.62.
By Situit, any discussion on the warrants? All those in favor? Unanimous for those who are here. Motion carries. Budget transfers.
We have one budget transfer for the year. One is the miscellaneous expenses. There's been some planning work being done by the state of oil, so there's been some expenses that have come propped up over the last month. So we're looking to add $5,000 to that budget line item. And software licenses, again, as we go more technical, a lot of the software programs that we're dealing with, they all have licensing fees, so that number 17,000, the savings is out of county retirement. We usually build, we usually set our accounting and retirement budget based upon their actuarial numbers, and their actuarial numbers getting a little lower, so pretty much a little high on the county retirement, so we have identified some savings there, so $22,000 would be reduced from county retirement budget.
Motion. Situit, Hansen, let's do it again. Any discussion? All in favor? Any one to post? No, it's unanimous. Motion carries. Anything else?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay. Nothing from the chairman tonight. Most of committee reports. Superintendent Director, Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few items on my report before I turn it over to our admin team. First item is MSBA core program invitation. It certainly is my pleasure to be able to say here at this meeting that on March 2nd, the Mass School Building Authority at its board meeting voted to invite our district into eligibility. We've been applying annually since 2015. We were one of 17 districts accepted. This begins a lengthy, but we're very much looking forward to process, which hopefully will culminate in several years with a modernized school that can take more children and is ready to push deeper into the century, meeting the needs for both faculty and students. So the process, which will come under new business, begins with a baby step tonight, and that is to vote to accept essentially the MSBA's terms and conditions, the initial compliance certification. But I'll talk about that a little bit more when it comes up under new business. Over the next two months, it is my hope to be able to tackle most of what the MSBA would like us to do in the next 270 days. We don't get extra credit for it, but we've been waiting for this, and I think we can do it. The next steps will involve bringing you language on setting aside funds for the feasibility study. We have been saving money for this. We will not need to borrow. We will not need to go back to our communities and have it be a warrant article. It is a matter for the regional school committee to decide, and hopefully I can bring that language to you at our next meeting in April. We'll also bring back in April plans to form a building committee, which is another early requirement in the process. And it may take one additional month, but hopefully by May at the latest, we will bring you a document where the MSBA asks us to envision, so if you get a new school or a renovated school, and the school is bigger and you can take more students, focus on your Chapter 74 programs and tell us which programs would you like to make bigger? Which ones would you like to introduce that you don't currently have now? And explain how it connects to the local labor market. And so that is a process that we've been talking about internally for a very long time. Again, not something that would take a lot of work to be able to bring to you, but it's a very important part of the process, because what the MSBA will do eventually is they will end up saying to us, we will, we're going to look at enrollment data, birth and death rates in your district, we're going to, we're going to project what size building would match with what you're saying you need for program. They want to hear from us about our waiting list data that we have. So I'm looking forward to bringing that report to you. Again, that may not be April, it might be May, but after we complete those components, we can then go back to the MSBA and say, we're ready for you to review what we have. What follows that process would be the beginnings of putting together a project team, which would involve the building committee having a subcommittee that would hire an OPM and a designer. Now, I'm getting ahead of myself, this is not months, now I'm getting into year plus, but if we can do the low-hanging fruit work quickly, we might be able to get in the queue. The MSBA conducts business on a quarterly basis. So as much as we can do properly, as quickly as possible, we will do. And so I look forward to those items on the agenda in upcoming, in upcoming months. Second item for my report, budget meeting update. We have met with Situit, both advisory and selectmen, also met with Norwell Advisory on March 15th yesterday, Whitman Finance Committee on March 22nd, and Rockland's Finance Committee likely to be either the 23rd or the 30th of March. So the process continues, the process continues as planned in terms of the budget. Next item, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to Mark and Sandy for their reports.
Good evening, everyone. We continue to celebrate the district and the groups and the individuals that support us. Tonight, we are bringing you not one, but two different groups to talk about. First up is Ms. Collette LeClaire, our school nurse. She's a nurse of five, and just to give you some ideas, as of last week, we've had 276 positive cases of COVID in the building for this school year. You can imagine the number of negative cases that she and her team have had to deal with in the last seven months. But that's, that's just a small banana for what she really does. She is the, she's the first level of medical attention for pretty much everybody in this building. She triages situations, she deals with burns, the cuts, and other chakalain accidents. And maybe most important, she is a good ear for our students. It's a place they can go where they feel comfortable and they can talk about what their problems are, and not just medical, but life problems. And really having her as an ear to bend is very important for our students. So I'm going to invite her up to say a couple words. Collette?
Well, so, hi. Thanks for inviting me, but I actually kind of came because I wanted to kind of publicly say thank you to everybody. This has been two years. Man, it's been a lot, so to the school committee, thank you. The care, consideration, everything you put into, all the COVID policies that you had to deal with in the past two years, it's appreciated. I know everything you put into it. And, you know, everybody's lots of beliefs, everybody did different things, but you guys put everybody, the students, healthy, safety first at all times, so that was appreciated. To the parents, I know there's only a few here, but man, I feel like we work through more together. The state guidance is changing all the time, but every parent, if I could just hug, because they set their kids healthy and ready to learn and put up with so much in the past couple of years, so it's truly amazing to be part of. The administration, Mr. Higgy, the staff, the teachers, I'm mind-blown at what, everything they did to get these kids educated in a school in the past two years, so it's amazing what they did. And if that's what we can do in a pandemic, sky's the limit what we can do. This school is amazing, so thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm not the best public speaker, but I appreciate every single one of your support.
Thank you, Collette.
Next, we're bringing in the Parents Association. This is something we haven't done in quite some time. We have a very active group of parents in the building, working in different organizations, but I wanted to give them an ear and give them some time to talk about what they're doing, how they're raising money in a pandemic, and what they're looking to do to support the school. So I'm going to introduce Mrs. Erin Benudi. She is the parent president of the Parents Association. She has two students here, Patrick is a senior and Megan is a sophomore. I'll let her introduce a little less for the entourage.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the invite, again, to be here. I had asked Mr. Aubrey at one of our meetings that, I watch other school committee meetings, and I know that other parents associations and athletic associations give reports, so I thought it was important that he knew who we are, the faces behind what we do and what we bring to the school. But I'd also like to thank not just the three other people that are here with me today, but the entire parents who support everything that we do, from fundraising to attending our, some of our events. But tonight, we have with me Nancy, and Lee, and Laurel. And Laurel kind of got dragged along with me when I said, we're the last two left, we got to rebuild, and that was during a pandemic, so thank you all. And Nancy and Lee have been fabulous, and they've jumped right in, along with a lot of our freshman parents this year, as we've rebuilt. And I would be remiss if I didn't call out somebody who has been with us for the past eight years, Ms. Mary Jo Tansy, whose youngest is graduating this year, another Patrick, and she will be, she sorts out a lot of, not just the parents association, but a lot of the school committees, and does a lot of our photography for the school, and really is a stealth volunteer and pictures to fill there. So as Mr. Aubrey said, my name is Erin Benudi, I do have two children here, I have a senior and a sophomore, and so one of the reasons why I decided to volunteer was because I felt that the school gave so much. When I found out there was no fees for sports, I wanted to give back automatically, and then it just snowballed from there. We've been able to meet some great people, we've made some great connections, and then our response has just been for the student body, and we've gotten to know a lot of parents and students. We are your ears and kind of mouths on the fields and on the car drives and at the bus stops, so other parents may be coming to us, or we're getting to know the students, and we're hearing from them, and we're bringing it back to the administration, saying, here's what we care, here's what's going on. Some of the things that we've done in the past is the school lights, we've actually, each group from the Vikings Athletic Association, the Parents Association, each spent $5,000, a total of $10,000, to help facilitate the lights on the field. We knew that was very important to the school atmosphere. We do more than just run the concession stand, we also will supply all the championship jackets, looking forward to purchasing more of those in the spring for all of our student athletes, so again, at no cost to them. We do scholarship programs for both of our, and it's not just, we don't call it scholarships, we actually call it a rewards program, so that the students can actually use them for more licensing tools. You just don't have to be going on to take college credits, and we make sure to let the students be aware of that. We do enrichment programs, which we're hoping to get that, right? Right? Looking to bring in some actual speakers, some actual programs, and I think the kids are looking forward to that, too. We have many extra needs for the students. We do staff and teacher appreciation, which we are so fortunate enough to have our, the brass lantin here, which we do coffee and pastries twice a month on Wednesdays for everybody, all staff in the building, including the bus drivers can come in, anybody in maintenance, if you're here in the morning, come and get it. And that's what we do for, to let the teachers know that we appreciate them. And any extra needs of the students, whether we have, there's a program that we need, or if we need some sort of materials around the school, or something that we've just done with banners around the school, whatever we need, we'll work in conjunction with the administration staff to bring that. What we have done during the pandemic was we've had to flip on a dime. Typically, we have one big event, and it's a physical event, right? Our cabin fever, and that hasn't been able to happen the past couple of years. So what we did was we decided to take some of the donations and other items, and we started doing our December raffle calendar, which more parents were able to get involved. It was an easier sell for the kids, and we've done just as successful. We'll be doing another fundraiser shortly, which will be kind of a Rust and Marlin kind of sign thing, which we're working with that graphics department to actually take the symbols from each of the trade shops and have that put on a sign for purchase. Again, as much Viking pride and social protest pride as we can put out there is what we're trying to do, and that's what we hear from our parents and our students. So thank you for the time to come here and speak to all of you. I know my children won't be part of that new school, but they are very, very excited to come back so that I don't have to care how did they get a new school when we didn't. So thank you again for the time, and thank you to my volunteers who are here tonight, and thank you to all the parents and students who help out in one way or another, whether it's buying the raffle calendar, or volunteering at some of our events, car show, looking forward to that again. Did you see how big that was this year? We're coming back, we're coming back, and the craft fair as well. So again, continue to help us by, you know, helping come to some of those things and spread the word, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for all you do.
Ever left out one of the most important things they do, they help sell us. When they're at the Little League games, when they're in town, when people are asking, what goes on over there? What's the education like? What are the sports? These are the people, these are the people in town that other parents are asking, so we appreciate everything they do as they talk about the school honestly and let people know what's going on. So this is one group of involved parents. We have another group of involved parents that's on the school council, I've talked about it a couple of times this year, just kind of bringing you in, bringing you up to the table we're at. We have a couple meetings left, I'm hoping to bring you a completed school improvement plan in May, okay? So that will be on the calendar. Talking about, a couple of themes that have come out, I think last time I was here, we talked about communication. They applauded us on our communication once you're in the building, and our messaging home and things like that, but they feel like we need to do a better job promoting the school to younger kids and younger families. So they came up with some interesting ideas, they want to do, when the students come in as freshmen, they do an exploratory, they go through all 12 programs. Well, when a student comes in and comes home and says, I was in mech today, the parents don't know what mech is, so they're looking for us to do some videos or come up with a night, where the parents can come through the program and find out what each one does so that they can have those important conversations when they go home with their student. They understand the background of what's happening and going on. They also want us to celebrate, as Erin mentioned, our sports teams and other events in the school, the drama club, the craft fair, anything that goes on in here, they want us to promote us outside of our home district, outside of our home people, trying to reach out and let the area towns know what's going on and what we're doing, and how great a school and community this really is. In the students round, we're looking, bringing class meetings. Now that COVID's over, we can stop putting kids back together and have pointed conversations about what it means to be a freshman or a junior, or you're going to be mentoring freshman next year. What it means to be a senior, and you're looking at after graduation, where are you going to go? All these things we want to bring together. We're talking about mentoring programs for the ninth graders, kind of a peer element type thing, and then we're also, tomorrow, X Monday night is our next meeting. Anybody's invited, you can send me an email and I'll give you your invite. So we are working on curriculum and assessment on the next couple of meetings. That's really what we're, we've kind of done the building stuff and the communication stuff, now we're down to the nitty-gritty of where do we need to put our money, where do we need to invest, what kind of curriculum do we need to bring in to better the students' population? Everybody have any questions? All right, then I'm going to leave it over to Sandy.
Thank you, Mark.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening, Sandy.
Start with a little bit of a cliche, this is, truly exemplifies what it means to, that it takes a village to raise a child, and I'd really like to thank Erin for her really powerful presentation, and thank Collette for her work. I do know we're on camera, but I remember if you ever stumbled across the TV show Abbott Elementary, it's a very funny situation comedy about an elementary school. Last night, I happened to watch a little bit of it, and they talked about friendships in the workplace, and there's a little bit of a fluffle about having just a work friend. I think folks would think of Collette and I as being work friends, but in Abbott Elementary, we realize that work friends, work friends are real friends. And I think that there are many people who feel just that way about Collette in our building. She is really a backbone of our institution, so.
Thank you, village. We appreciate you.
A few other updates, I'm going to represent myself, as well as Grace, who's unable to be with us tonight, our student advisor, our, our, our school, our student, our school maybe student representative, student coordinator, sorry. Too busy thinking about Collette as my friend, so. Now I'm back on point. Sports, we have more students than ever participating in sports, spring sports. We have 195 students who registered for spring sports, that's about one-third of our school population, so pretty impressive. We roll out the red carpets for tryouts on Monday. We have lacrosse, cross country, baseball, and softball, as, sorry, stop, cross country is track and field at the time. We have, we'll be sending 26 students to skills states next month, and right now, we have our horticulture program at Future Farmers of America competing for awards as we speak the weekend. The drama club, though, I'm going to end with a couple of invitations. The first is an invitation to our Check Please, presented by the Drama Club in April. Their dinner theater is the first, if you'd like to see Joseph's show, at 7:30, it is 7:00, 8:00, at 7:00 PM, it's the 2nd, 8:00, and the 9:00. And then finally, this is for me personally, I would really enjoy your company at the Credit for Life Fair on April 13th from 7:30 till 8:30. It is a continental breakfast, and I'm going to put you to work. We are doing a hybrid event this year, and we're engaging the math department and the English department in this event, so we've done the Credit for Life in many different ways. During COVID, we were able to do an online event. Pre-COVID, we had a very big fair in our gymnasium. We slimmed it down a little bit, and we have, the students are doing the Credit for Life mathematical portion online, supported by the structural bankers who will be at the other end of the chat answering their questions. What we're doing live on campus is that the students will come in for continental breakfast to start their school day, they will learn how to have conference chatter. We've all been to a conference where we've had to hold our cup of coffee, a bagel, and engage in an adult conversation. We're going to ask them to do that with adults, with the adults in the room. We're going to ask them to come, dressed in business casual attire. Part of your goal will be helping us identify those students who did a good job dressing in business casual attire. They'll move from there into their math classrooms for the online experience, and then they'll be called down by shop to a, the booth, like, similar to what they have done in the past, but the focus this time is not on calculating a mathematical formula about how much their transpiration's going to cost, they'll do that online. This is about talking to someone in the car industry about owning a car, having a professional dialogue, an adult dialogue with an adult about an adult topic. So they'll have the opportunity to interact with up to four booths, they'll get a sign off on two, we'll send that back to the English teacher and say, hey, your student participated and did a nice job communicating. The math teacher will have the responsibility for calculating the work on the other end of the hybrid online experience. So April 13th, 7:30, love to see you. Buy a cup of coffee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're back on.
That concludes my report. I'll turn it back over to you for new business.
New business, the MSBA initial compliance certification. The first item is to vote to accept the MSBA's initial compliance certification document that outlines the terms and conditions of the core program. Do I have a motion? Rockland, second by?
I think he'll take heed on it probably. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any discussion? I'll take a vote then. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. There is no one opposed. The motion carries. Learn to cope facilities use. I'd ask for a motion to approve the monthly use of meetings.
Should we take the roll call on that, since it goes to MSBA?
As long as it's an open session, a voice vote would be acceptable.
All right, okay. Still checking.
Thank you.
No, I appreciate it.
We have four years of crossing Ts and dotting Is.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
Not a problem, not a problem. I'd ask for a motion to approve the monthly use of meeting space for Learn to Cope as they resume in-person meetings this spring after being revoked since the beginning of the pandemic. Situit.
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Whitman. Any discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman, just as a reminder, Learn to Cope is an organization that supports people who have loved ones that are struggling with addiction. This committee has approved their use in the past.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Motion carries. There is a surplus request. Motion to accept the items listed. So move Situit, seconded by...
Anthony.
Anthony.
I have a question, a discussion on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is it worth Alwell to trade these, these things like this instead of, it's a joke? Nobody wants it. Yeah, no, it's not going to...
Mr. Chairman. Go ahead. Yes, actually, Bob, we recently did amend our procurement policy, excuse me, our surplus, our disposition policy, so that the state regulations say that a municipality has to specify in its surplusing policy that it can utilize items for trading. So when it is in our best interest, we now have the ability to do that, so that we're getting maximum bang for buck.
And that is a hobot dishwasher. We're declaring surplus. All in favor? Again, it's unanimous. Motion carries. Any requests for action?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
I don't know whether it should be under request for action, but after last night's finance meeting with Norwell, and this is just a thought, I don't want people to have a blind on it, how about us sponsoring to our communities, the finance committees in particular, and maybe the salad administrators? It is involved Jim on how to interpret the way the state mandates us different things in our formula.
Mr. Chairman, if I, just to expand on what Bob said, there were questions at Norwell's advisory committee meeting about the Chapter 70 funding formula. We all know that it is synonymous to say Chapter 70 funding formula, and complicated, but it does come to a point where people who are stewards over towns' finances want to know a little bit more about how these numbers are calculated.
Very different.
And I think that, if I may, I think that the idea has merit, and we know from listening to earlier presentations that we can patch in a lot of people to a professional development provider through Zoom and/or in-person to be able to go over this. Department of Education does have some resources, but there are also third-party providers who could not only explain the mechanics of Chapter 70, but could also provide specific town insight as to why a number is the way it is.
Unfortunately, Norwell has a new committee with the exception of one person, but I'm going to say 50% of us at the tables right here can't explain how to do it. It is complicated. It's mind-wide, and, you know, we have to take one-eighth and one-one-hundredth of this and all that. It's, but it's a thought, and I think it would help our communities, especially when we send them a bill.
I'd be happy to look into that, Mr. Chairman.
It may help call it, too, if he has to do it once.
And not eight times. Go ahead.
Yeah, on that note, Tom, you may want to get ahold of answered cables access. Like, with that information, do a show on it, and it can be distributed to all the communities that are in it, right? That way, you know, maybe you get somebody from the state to come into the show with you and do an answer, you know, back and forth.
They have been very accessible, and I'm sure that could be part of it, Dan.
Because I can remember years ago when a previous business manager tried to explain how they did it to us, and very, very complicated, you know, depending on each individual town exactly how they, you know, they fit the program. So, because what's, maybe your town's a lot different than what's in our town because of the makeup, so.
We get new people that are interested in tennis. But one thing we did forget is what we paid for that the towns don't last night, we didn't bring that up, you know, snowplow and, you know...
All the other... It inflates the perpugal cost beyond the formula.
But I think it'd be a good idea, you know, even if it costs us a breakfast or something.
I'll feed him when they'll come.
No, it's a good idea.
That's a good idea. Thank you, Bob. Okay, I will take a motion to go into executive session. Situit, Rockland, seconded. Any discussion on that?
Do you have to explain why?
Take a roll call, go. Get it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. The chair stated at the beginning, that's all we're covering.
Yep, I thought so. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. We're now in executive session. We'll take about a five-minute break. Okay, we're back in regular session. We are not going to take up agenda item number 11, and now we'll accept the motion to adjourn. So move. Seconded by Everton. All votes in favor? Aye. It's unanimous. We are adjourned.